Is proposing to build a 148-unit assisted living facility that will have 76 non-ambulatory assisted living units and 72 other units. The report says 72 memory units. I'll let the applicant address that. In more recent conversations, it looks as though they will have a minimum of 32 memory units and then depending on how the memory units, what the demand is for that, the other 40 units could be used either for partly memory units and then partly other assisted living for seniors that need more care, they need nursing and those sorts of things, and meals and that kind of thing. So, that's where that stands. Some of you have been on the commission for a while and may remember this particular piece of property, but by way of history, it was originally platted as Parkway West. That was approved in roughly 2000 and without going through the entire report, basically that resulted in the construction of the Stewart Title Building. Nothing really followed that. In 2008, in July of 2008, a PUD concept was brought forward. That was brought forward to the planning commission prior to July and then July 21st, I think, is the city council approved that PUD concept plan. And that concept plan was for a commercial development, retail commercial and office mixed-use type development. The comprehensive plan was changed from the mixed-use Flex Tech designation to the commercial designation. And then in line with that, the zoning was changed and that was from a service office in the Adams-Derry Parkway overlay to a general business in the Adams-Derry Parkway overlay and that's the zoning that it is today. There were some construction activities that began out there. They moved some dirt. They put in some of the utilities, at least partially. Those things we'll talk about a little later in the report. As far as applications that you will see again in front of you, as the development moves forward, they'll have to do a preliminary and a final plat. They will go through the Appearance Review Committee because it is in the Adams-Derry Parkway overlay. They will have to do a PUD final plan and a site plan and design review, both of which will come before this body. Signings will likely be approved with a standard sign permit unless a sign program is either needed or desired. I think for the next part of this, we'll just go to the site plan. It probably offers the best overview, excuse me, of the property. And to start off, let's talk a little bit about kind of how they're going to be dividing this property up. They're looking right now at dividing it into four lots. Lot one is in this area, right here, and that will be used primarily, well solely, for open space and stormwater detention. As most of you know, there's a stormwater detention basin here. I believe that is intended to remain and the rest of it will be open space with a small connecting trail out to the hike bike trail for Adams-Derry Parkway. That particular lot consists of about 1.4 acres. Lot two is the lot that they intend to build the senior facility or the assisted living facility. That particular lot is eight, approximately eight acres, I think a little bit more. And then lots three and lots four, each of which are approximately two acres, they're just a little bit over, are set aside at this point for a either retail or more likely office. And what they're kind of looking towards is perhaps medical-type offices to help support the assisted living facility. To move on to the land use portion, we've already kind of touched on this. When the comprehensive plan was changed to a general business and the, or to a commercial and the zoning was changed to a general business, that set the stage for use of an assisted living facility. That is a permitted use in the general business, excuse me, in the general business zoning district, as well as the medical office would be a permitted use or retail if that's the direction it ends up going. So, it is consistent. The zoning and land use are consistent. I'm going to touch just briefly, and right now I'm looking at four and five of 11 of the cleanup operations. When the original, or I should say when the second development came forward, and that would be the mixed-use development with retail and office, as I said, they moved some dirt and they also installed some stormwater inlets. And if you will remember, they requested and were approved to have access from Adams-Derry Parkway. And when they did that, it interrupted the flow of stormwater down the curb and gutter, and so they installed three stormwater inlets and intended eventually then to tie the development into those. Those will need to be removed. And there are other utilities on the site. Depending on whether or not they're reusable, they may also have to be removed. They'll also have to stabilize the stormwater detention and there's a stormwater report that will be required later. We'll talk about that in the report, but again, they'll have to do some stuff with stormwater as well. This particular proposal is proposing access only from Northeast Napoleon. Although it's a bit hard to see, they have an access here and they have an access over here. Those are the only two accesses to the development. It is doubtful that there will ever be an access to lot one. And if there is an access, we would have to evaluate it at that time, but right now there is no access provided to lot one. Lots three and lots four, both will be accessed from Northeast Napoleon. And the way that our code reads is that should the intersection of Northeast Napoleon and Adams-Derry Parkway be a signalized intersection, the closest access to that intersection would be 250 feet. Otherwise, it would be 200 feet. Either way, as the development goes forward, we look a little bit more closely at a traffic impact analysis that's amended from what's already been submitted, there'll be a determination made as to where those driveways can be. Both of those are provided as conditions and they're highlighted and bulleted in the staff report. One is that they submit a traffic study and the other then that the driveways meet the minimum code requirements. Sidewalks per section 406030, which is the pedestrian ways and sidewalks, will be required along Northeast Napoleon Drive, along their frontage. There's a condition that relates to that. And then as most of you know, along the west side of Adams-Derry Parkway is a hike bike trail. And that hike bike trail is in pretty sorry shape. With the Adams-Derry Parkway overlay district, one of the things that developments need to look at is that hike bike trail and they will be required to repave that trail, to take care of some of the issues that have to do with just deterioration of pavement. Stormwater drainage, I don't want to talk about this a whole lot, other than to say that they will be required to provide a stormwater drainage study. And that study will make a determination as to what facilities are appropriate for the development size and type, whether or not the existing development is suitable, and if it is suitable, what the appropriate vegetation would be around that stormwater detention basin. Again, that's also a condition and it's highlighted and bulleted on page six of 11. They'll also be required to provide an erosion control plan during construction. Not only does it keep them in line with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, but it also keeps the city in line with our non-point source pollution permits. Off-street parking, the off-street parking, for the first phase of the development, they plan on building 108 units and 115 parking spaces. And as you can see in the staff report, typical assisted living development would require one space per unit. So, in phase one, they would be meeting their, they would be meeting their parking requirement. However, our code doesn't really have a parking requirement specified for memory units. So, in lieu of that, what we do have is what's called a Schedule C. And it allows them to justify their parking based more on need as opposed strictly to the code. So, in the second phase of the development, they will be finishing this off with the full 178 units. And at that particular point, they will have roughly 129 parking spaces. So, as you can see, then there becomes a discrepancy between what is required for typical assisted living and then what's going on with this particular development. As part of that Schedule C, they'll make an argument, which staff thinks is fairly sound, the memory unit folks won't be driving. So, there is no need to provide any kind of parking for that particular or that number of units. And that's where we come up with the idea that they will eventually be meeting the UDC requirement for parking. That will come through with their PUD final plan, their site plan and design review. They'll make that justification. Minimum setbacks along Adams-Derry Parkway, this is both for paving and building, is 50 feet, and along the other roadways, it's 25 feet. And the interior setback is 20 feet. They have met that requirement with the possible exception of the patio located on lot one. And that is somewhat dependent on how they construct that. If they use a crushed rock or pea gravel or something like that, we would not consider that a hard-surfaced area. And it would be fine for them to just leave it as is, slightly encroaching into that 50-foot setback. If they want to pave the picnic gazebo area, we would then require them, and this will come forward through the PUD final plan, site plan and design review, that they move that back a little bit and get it out of that 50-foot setback. That is also a condition listed on page seven of 11. Landscaping at this particular point through the concept, through the PUD concept plan, they don't provide specifics. We've given you in the staff report on page eight of 11 what the requirements for landscaping are, including parking lot, open space and buffer landscaping. What we can see by the plan is that they do have plenty of open space, they have plenty of buffer space, and they have looked at the parking and parking lots and are certainly satisfied that they'll be able to meet the parking lot landscaping One thing that we are looking at for landscaping is because we do have the wide buffers and because in the Adams-Derry Parkway overlay district, within those buffers, you cannot have any parking paved surface, that sort of thing, that rather than the smaller, they're required to have B buffers along Napoleon and Adams-Derry Parkway as well as our D-Mize. And because they have such a large area, there's two different requirements. You can either do a 15-foot landscape buffer and provide 45 plants per 100 linear feet, or you can have a 25-foot buffer and then provide less plant units of, what is it, 20, I think? I'm sorry, 40 plant units per 100 linear feet. And we are recommending that they go ahead and use the larger buffers, the 25 feet. Spread that plant material out a little bit and continue to give it more of that park-like feel rather than trying to condense them in that 15 feet. If there are some voids in there, they have open space landscaping that can also be put in the buffer areas. So, there's plenty of opportunity for that to look good with those larger buffers. And they are agreeable to that. Talk a little bit about the architectural character. And to do that, I'm going to see if I can roll down here. I think this provides a pretty good representation of what the single-story buildings might look like. I know the architect has brought some elevation drawings with him and we'll certainly go into this in more detail. But the exterior building materials that they are looking at are primarily siding, and I think it's vinyl siding. We will let the architect talk more about that. And then there's some brick at the base. Pretty standard residential-looking type of buildings, all in all. And, let's see if we can find the other. I think this is more representative of what the non-ambulatory assisted living facility will look like. And it also gives some idea of a main entrance. Again, the architect has brought some drawings with him and I'll let him go into much more detail about it. When we reviewed these, this portion over here of the development, we thought was done very well. It has good verticality to it and the horizontal, well-balanced. It gets a little blocky in this area. He's done some, I think, some new elevations that also show that it's a three-story building here instead of a two, and I'll let him discuss that when he gets up. Again, they will be going through the Appearance Review Committee because of the Adams-Derry Parkway overlay, and you will see it again in site plan and design review and the final PUD plan. With that, staff is recommending approval of the PUD concept plan. There are 14 conditions and most of them have been talked about within the staff report. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Trozyn.
Mr. Holly, was there any discussion regarding outdoor living space? I see a couple of courtyards that is in the middle, two buildings. Were there any discussion in regards to amenities within those courtyards?
No, there hasn't been. And typically, we would see that more towards the site plan design review and final PUD plan, but you're certainly welcome past the architect. I bet he has more insight on that than I.
Any other questions? Okay. Yes, Mr. Alves.
Was there any discussion given to having an exit on the east side of this onto Adams-Derry or just another exit on that one side as opposed to the two that's on the west?
There was discussion of it and that's something that we really discourage. We're not looking to put exits, entrances, or any access onto Adams-Derry Parkway, and primarily because when you do that, you really compromise the safety of the hike bike trail further than it's already compromised with what's there.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holly.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward and make their presentation? And you will need to be sworn in.
The pretty stuff, we'll discuss.
Yeah, and I was going to kind of point, so.
Okay.
I'm not very good at that.
Swearing.
If you saw me swear the testimony about giving this case, give the truth.
I did.
Did your name and address.
My name is Denise Matheson, 579 East Farm Road 122 Springfield, Missouri. As I stated, my name is Denise Matheson and I am the Director of Operations and Development for O'Reilly Development. That is the development company and owner of the proposed project. We have developed previous senior communities and we pride ourselves on a continuum of care format for the community. Our goal is that after that first very difficult decision to give up your home, to move into a community that offers additional services and quite frankly, their home for life is the way that we, is the philosophy around these communities. So, it's a continuum of care. We fully expect and encourage and design so that it's an easy transition from that first step from their homes to, like I said, their home for life. And what that is, is the first step is in this independent living part of the community, and that is the three-story building. They're independent units. There'll be a mix of studios, one-bedrooms and two-bedroom units. Services and assistance are at whatever level the resident needs. The intention is when they originally come in, it's really their lawn care, their building care that they're getting. They have no maintenance associated with their, when they're living there. And then also, if they need housekeeping, if they want to have meals provided to them, we partner with like an Integrity Home Healthcare or the healthcare providers up here. Also, because we have a full nursing staff in this piece, we're able to add whatever services they need that keeps them in the independent side of it as long as they possibly can. Once they transition past that stage of life, then we have what will be 32 units of memory care and then 40 units, this says memory care. It'll be either memory care or assisted living. The assisted living is without the memory loss associated with it. Generally, we see all three pieces to this. There is a industry-wide, I think, community-wise, age-wise, a shortage of memory care units. That's the only reason that we've left the option open to see how the memory care fills up before we define exactly what this phase of it will be. Both sides can go either way. This portion of the project requires an application and approval from the Department of Health. It's called a certificate of need application. We have submitted that application and we will hear July 8th on our approval of the 72 beds. We went ahead and did the full applications. Our intentions are to build up the independent living and the 32 units here and start our lease up. And then right behind the success of that piece, we will do the additional 40 units. So, that's why the full 72 that we've applied for. Someone had asked a question about the courtyard areas that you see in the memory care and the assisted living. Those are enclosed courtyards and they're called secure wandering areas. So, it's important that the residents, regardless of the condition of their health, have the ability to get outside and get close to Mother Nature, fresh air. So, that's why it's enclosed. It's a controlled, secured area. And we do different, there's different concepts. And again, as Jim said, we'll go through the detailed review of it, but there gazebo, plant, sidewalk combinations, they're really very beautiful garden areas, if you will. Again, we did not pursue trying to get an access off of Adams-Derry, although the last PUD that was approved did have it. Two reasons. Jim and Scott discouraged us in doing that. And secondly, for our resident profile, really to come around and to be able to slow down and enter in that manner is a safer way for them to come into the community. So, that's our layout for the community. And then as Jim said, we did conceptual elevations on the building. It's, again, it's conceptual. We'll fine-tune this. It'll go through a layer of reviews, excuse me, Jim. And I'm probably going to leave the rest of the conversation and the detail on the architect to my architect, Tim Wilson with SWD Architects. And one other thing, and I don't, I'll, let me just real quickly discuss the parking spots. There are 129 parking spots. We have a total of 148 units with the full build-out of this. Memory care, for obvious reasons, do not drive. So, we have zero drivers for 32 of the units, which puts us down to 116. On assisted living and quite frankly, independent, we find an average of 50% drivers. So, I only take out 50% on the assisted living, that second 40-unit phase. So, it'll either be 20 or 40 stalls that we don't need. So, 96 is our maximum need based on historical data. And we have 129 spots on the site plan. And this is Tim Wilson.
If you saw me swear the testimony about giving this case, give the truth.
Tim Wilson, 315 Nichols Road, Kansas City, Missouri.
As Denise said, Tim Wilson, I'm principal with SWD Architects and working with Denise on the design of her project here. We were not the architects on the one you saw that was in Springfield, but we're working kind of with that theme of materials that they have started with down there on that project. And primarily, you've got four materials that you're going to see on the building elevations. We've got a brick, wainscoting that's occurring down along the bottom of the elevations here, and then a faux stone that will come up higher for the vertical pieces. And then we've got some areas of lap vinyl siding and a vertical vinyl siding, plus then finally, some more flat areas that would be an ethos or a drive-in type system there and just a normal asphalt shingle rook on each of the buildings. This is the kind of the front facade, the way we're starting to develop the front facade of the independent living, which would be facing Napoleon. It's this little piece right here in the center of the Y. And then what you see here, and this is the three-story piece, and this piece here is the memory care wing, which would be down here facing the south. And this would be the entrance on it. And this is the dining room area here that opens up and gives a high ceiling through and visibility all the way through to the courtyard spaces there. So, again, we're conceptual in developing the design at this point with some comments from Jim, as he already stated, on what they liked and what they're not fond of on the previous project down in Springfield. So, we're going to work closely with him to make sure that he's happy with everything we're doing there. But if you have any questions, I'll see what I can offer you.
Are there any questions for either of the applicants? Mr. Trozyn.
Just so I'm clear, the elevation at the bottom would be the elevation facing Adams-Derry Parkway? Or is that the south elevation?
It's actually south. What you see here is the piece, this little piece right here. I don't know if you can see on my, flip this over here. It's going to be this piece right here is the entrance, is what we've elevated right there. Along here is going to be more standard, and these would be the resident rooms, and it's going to be the windows for the resident rooms across there. So, it's really developed here more on the south side where the parking is. So it's really developed here more on the south side where the parking is, where you would approach the building.
Single-story?
Yes. This piece is all single-story. Actually, with the barbing and landscape, and it's already here, you're not gonna see a lot of this from Adams Dairy Parkway.
That's also the front elevation on the north side.
Right. And when the second wing would come along, it would be a mirror of that. We would just flip that over to that side.
Any other questions? On the, in my mind, the apartment side.
The independent living?
Yeah. What is the mix between the studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom?
It's our studios, we have 10 studio units, we have 41 bedrooms and 26 two-bedroom units.
Forty-one bedroom, and how many two-bedroom, I'm sorry?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. What do you typically see in a unit like this? Why would you need two bed, why would somebody want two bedrooms?
Multiple reasons. If it's a couple, a lot of times, they have a shared bedroom scenario. And also, they guess, they'd like to have their grandchildren come. Their children are out of town, so they come to visit. Also, just for that extra little den sewing area.
Okay.
They're remembering that they're coming straight from their homes to this type of living, so, you know, there, I would say there are younger residents that do the two-bedroom ones. Our average age is about 72 years old, and probably close to 72 to 80. But the, like I say, if it's a couple, if they have childrens, larger families, they like to have that extra guest bedroom.
Okay. Did you have a question?
No, but I can understand, we're coming from a house.
Yes.
To an apartment. It's quite dramatic, so.
And I will tell you, and that's, you would think that the two-bedroom mix is a little higher than the one-bedroom mix, but actually, they delay the decision for so long that they really, it's more of a force to have to. It definitely, the first step is a need-based one that usually family's behind.
If you could flip that around to the other side. When I looked at this, it seemed odd to me that all of the parking was on the side of the building that where the residents weren't gonna have any cars. Can you tell me why it was done that way and the parking isn't more on the apartment side?
It's a little deceiving, because actually, these residents won't have cars. It's the memory care and the assisted living. This parking section and this parking section are specifically targeted for the independent living, the assisted living, so they'll have back access to where they don't have to come in the main entrance area. And then, this area allows for service people, guests, staff people is what it is. So this really isn't considered, we don't expect this to be resident parking. It will be our staff that's associated with the full development, service providers, mainly service providers will be coming in and out of there. Family members can park here, and then, of course, family members and guests up front.
Okay.
This is also an entrance that will connect right through on access with the main entrance here. So when you come into this space, you're in the center of the building, whether you're going to a memory care unit or a independent living unit.
Our front entrance really is a guest entrance, or we always do a service bus, so the community has a bus for transportation, so, you know, that's a, a lot of times, that's the pickup area that's easiest for the residents.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Yes, Mr. Sanders.
The 129 parking stalls, does that include for service worker or workers and employees?
That's correct.
How many do you anticipate?
We will have probably 40 to 50 workers at a 24-hour shift, so that will overlap quite a bit, obviously. We'll divide that into three different shifts, but there will be workers in certain aspects, again, the memory care and the assisted living, that will be 20, there'll be 24-hour coverage. So I'm gonna say 10 to 15 each shift is what will, you'll see needing to use parking spots. And again, like I said, the assisted living, our ratio is about 50% on those that come and are driving, or even very quickly give up their cars, do not need to drive anymore. And one of that is just the comfort of the bus and the, you know, the concierge services associated with it. It, you know, takes a year or so, but it, by the end of the time, it's, people are comfortable, but this provides everything that they need. Any additional questions?
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One, just one question. I gather this is gonna be age-restricted?
It is.
Okay.
It's 55 and older.
Right.
Again, our average age is 72.
And then the three buildings, of course, would have an elevator?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Some of the amenities, we didn't mention those, but the amenities that we provide, I mean, it's a full-service community. It'll have a commercial kitchen. There are commercial kitchens in all building areas, in this area, this area, and this area. There's nursing stations and office staffing, med dispersment areas associated with these too. There's a beauty shop, fitness area, a library, a community area, a family dining area, which is a little more cozy. It's not the open dining with everybody else, but they wanted to have Thanksgiving with their family. They could utilize that.
A theater?
Pardon?
A theater?
A theater.
The men's den area?
A men's den area, yes. We don't call it the bar, but it's just the men's den area. And with the memory care, also, an interesting piece of it is we have life stations there, and what they are is they're different little station areas that help trigger memories of what they used to do and who their family are, like a wardrobe life station to where there's clothes there, and, you know, they can practice basically dressing themselves or the therapy associated with that, that memory that we trigger. There's a baby station there. There's a bed, an infant station there, a baby there, and you'd be surprised if the women that'll sit there and rock that baby and talk to it. So our philosophy with both the memory, well, mainly the memory care, but the entire community, is we don't fight their world, we step into it. So if we've got a resident, and we've had a resident that made many quilts throughout her life, and she made them for everybody she knew and her family members, she's made them for our staff, too, and they all love them. We just enter into their world, and the whole community is designed around that concept. Anything else?
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I do have one.
Yes, Ms. McCall.
What about the security? Are you gonna have your own security?
It is a secured facility. The level of security, of course, is higher at the memory care and the assisted living side of it. There are door, there are wandering door-trigger monitors at every exit. We actually, and this is more operations than I am, so I know just enough to say this, there are wander guard systems, so we can actually tell when the residents are up and down, or when they're moving around, that we continue to monitor. Something that's really exciting to us is Tim and I, and our operator Stephanie Harris, we took a trip to Columbia, met with MU. Their Tiger Place has highly advanced technological systems that assist in monitoring the residents without being invasive to them. And so we're in initial conversations with them on how we can implement that and bring some of that into this community, because they're past the research stage, they've tested it, and they're looking for new communities to continue to test it on. Anything else?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll open it up to the audience. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this petition for a, for this concept plan?
I can make one more comment.
Sure, come on up to the mic so that we get you on record here.
I forgot to mention that I did do a neighborhood meeting last Monday, I believe is when I did that. So we sent an invitation out to all of our neighbors in the 185-foot distance, and I had two people attend that, and they were in support of it, and they also wrote a letter of support. But Jim, myself, and two neighbors showed up for that, and they were 100% behind it.
Thank you. Okay, again, is there anyone out here who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak against? Seeing no one to make a comment, I will bring it back up here for discussion on the record. I think this is a welcome addition and something that we need here in town, and this is a very good site for it.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no comments, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Let me close the public hearing first, please.
Yes.
I can close the public hearing, and now I would open it up for motions and/or additional comments. Mr. Trozen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the Plan Unit Development Concept Plan, PUDC 5-13-3950, Adams Dairy Senior Community PUD, subject to the 10 recommendations, 14 recommendations by staff. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second from Ms. Banks. All, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Abbott. Commissioner Wallace. Commissioner Sanders.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner McCall.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Bartolata.
Aye.
Commissioner Dewan.
Aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Aye.
Commissioner Trozen.
Aye.
Chairman Billis.
Aye. And that has been unanimously approved, and we will take that recommendation on to the City Council. And we now move on to, we have a public hearing on a conditional use permit, a Plan Unit Development Final Plan, Site Plan Design Review, and a Master Alternative Sign Plan, all for the Mirror Image Car Wash. We will hear all of those together and then vote on them separately. I'll open the public hearing to start with on the conditional use permit. Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, the city has eight exhibits for this conditional use permit. They're numbered nine through 16. Number nine is the staff report with attachments. Number 10 is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number 11 is the application with attachments. Number 12 is the 185-foot notification map. Number 13 is a list of the names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number 14 is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number 15 is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number 16 is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. And Ms. Gowdy, I believe this is your first time to present to us?
First time in a while, yes. Thank you for having me here. There are three applications tonight for Mirror Image. There are the conditional use permit, the PUD Final Plan, combined with the Site Plan Design Review, and the Alternative Sign Plan. The property is located at 2015 Northwest 7 Highway, which is more generally located on the west side of 7 Highway at northwest Manor Road. The approximate one-acre property is zone regional commercial restricted overlay. It is part of the Kingpin Development PUD, that is a previously approved PUD. In 2011, Mirror Image Car Wash took the first steps to locate the proposed car wash at the site. They received approvals for the PUD Concept Plan and a change of zoning. They changed it from general business to restricted overlay, to the regional commercial restricted overlay. The conditions of approval for the approved rezoning request only permits the use of the site for a car wash. It does not allow for use by more intensive businesses typically permitted in regional commercial zoning districts. To have any more intensive use than the car wash, it does require approval of a rezoning request by the City Council. The phases of approvals required prior to construction include those applications being heard tonight. The PUD Final Plan and Site Plan Design Review is contingent upon approval of the conditional use permit. The first request, this application here, is for the conditional use permit for operations of a car wash on the subject property. UDC Section 405010 requires conditional approval of car washes in regional commercial districts. Section 405020Z of the use regulations require that car wash service bays and other vehicular use areas not face any residential uses. As it's proposed now, the entry bay of the car wash faces residential property. It's actually over here to the west side. There's the rest of the Kingpin Development here with parking here. So there is not a significant concern as far as screening from the residential property due to the large parking lot field for the rest of the commercial uses. And a landscape buffer, as required, has been provided along the west property line, as well as variation in the topography should screen view from the properties, residential properties. Staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit. The second application for Mirror Image Car Wash tonight is the request for the PUD Final Plan combined with the Site Plan Design Review. That request is for approval of the 4,840-square-foot tunnel car wash. This picture up here that you're looking at is from their south car wash, which is very similar to the approval we have today. This is the one at the Mollet Fall Creek off of 7 Highway. The existing access drive to the Kingpin Development is off of 7 Highway, which will remain as existing. One entry and exit drive will be added to the interior of the site to allow access. The parking exceeds the minimum requirements for car washes. There's approximately 25 vehicle stacking spaces and 15 parking spaces, most of which will be used for the vacuum stations. There are no public improvements required for this development, but there is additional dedication needed of a sanitary sewer easement. Basically, the existing, I have a map here. Basically, the existing location of the sanitary sewer line does not encompass the where the sanitary sewer easement has been dedicated, so they'll basically just need an additional easement to cover that location. That just has to be recorded with Jackson County prior to issuance of building permits. The traffic impact statement has been provided and approved by the Public Works Department, finding no necessary improvements. Stormwater detention has been previously approved for the development, and just specific stormwater plans directing the stormwater to that stormwater detention area will be approved through the building permit process. Screening for mechanical equipment and other utilities is required in accordance with the UDC, and must be shown, again, through the building permit process for approval. The applicant has met and exceeds overall required plant unit requirements for the development, including the landscape buffer along 7 Highway and the interior open space requirements. Additional plantings located just south of the subject property line provide additional functional buffer along the south. Steep topography and easement restrictions along the northern portion of the site do somewhat limit the landscaping, but do provide screening to the site from the property located directly to the north. screening to the site from the property located directly to the north. Again, they do meet the overall landscape requirements. So staff does recommend approval of the PUD Final Plan and Site Plan Design Review application with five conditions. And the final application tonight for Mirror Image is a request for an alternative sign plan approval for one wall sign and one menu board. This is the sign package here. The proposed sign package does include one wall sign on the north elevation, one wall sign on the south elevation, as well as one monument sign along 7 Highway, one menu board, it's a changeable copy sign essentially by the cashier's building on the northwest portion of the site, and two informational signs, one at the entry drive and one by the cashier building. All of the proposed signs do meet the sign code with the exception of the wall sign on the north facade and the menu board. The sign code requires that wall signs either face public right-of-way or be located or over or next to a main building entry. That's not the case for the sign on the north elevation, so it does not meet that code requirement. And second, the sign code also limits menu boards to use by fast food restaurants for drive-in and drive-through menu boards and automotive service stations as part of a monument sign. So the car wash does not specifically fall kind of in this, you know, fast food use, but they do have, you know, drive-through nature kind of of their operations, so we do feel that it's appropriate for this specific use. Staff does recommend approval of the alternative sign plan with one condition. I'll take any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Gowdy on any of the three issues? Okay, I guess not.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to come up and make their presentation? And again, you'll need to be sworn in.
If you'd like to order something about people's faces, would you be able to stop the guy?
Yes, I do.
If you can handle it.
Thank you. Good evening.
Leave that in the trash, please.
I'm Thomas Nolte with Nolte and Associate Architects and Planners. We're at 9,400 Reed's Road, Overland Park, Kansas. And with me tonight, if I may, I'd like to introduce John Belfoni, our owner-operator, and Ryan Berenson is chief architect. If I could, again, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Well, I'm glad we're here. This has been an interesting and probably one of the more elaborate entitlement processes that we've been through. James, two years ago, we sat around a table, and we began saying, okay, if we look at this site, what do we need to know? How do we approach it? What is the path? And we had five items that we needed to bring before the Planning Commission. As Lauren aptly pointed out, in December, well, we were here in October of '11, and then we went on to City Council in December of '11. We had the rezoning. And then there was also a PUD Concept Plan, which was technically the preliminary plan that went with this. Luckily, we received unanimous support at the City Council, and this allowed us then to plan for these next three parts, and the three parts that are in front of you this evening, which is the conditional use permit, which is the one public hearing, and then there are the other two, which are more administrative, which is the Plan Unit Development Final Plan and Site Plan Review, and of course, then the Master Site Plan for Alternative Signs. So, if I may. Please. I really don't have a lot of comments. I think we've done most of our homework in advance, a lot of meetings, correspondence, and a two-year race that we've been in. It's been more of a marathon than a sprint in bringing this application to you this evening. The first one, the conditional use, is it's interesting how all of these applications and overlays go together. So this is the one that Lauren particularly reviewed as for car wash only. And this becomes very specific for site development and site use. And if I may, I just brought a little plan with me. James, if you can help me, I appreciate it. All right. Thank you. Here, Missouri Highway 7, it runs north and south. I want to go ahead and point out that Louisville is to the south, and they have a large parking lot that surrounds this site. We have an entry off of this 75-foot wide, it's very wide, throat on the entry to Louisville. We have stacking lane that-
Sir, sir, can you talk into the mic? Sure. It's okay.
We have a-
Just kind of move it a little bit.
All right, how's that? We have a stacking lane that goes around the site and comes up to our pay booth, and then, of course, the cars are processed, and they enter on the west end and proceed to the east. They exit. They have the opportunity to leave, or they can do the vacuums. This is very similar to the exact piece that we have, as staff showed earlier, the one at, well, what I call, South 7, which is at the falls. So same materials, same processing, same exterior, same signage. So now we have one on the north end, and we'll have one on the south end. So we received your approval this evening. But getting back to the conditional use permit, we have looked at the six items that were to be included, and the staff recommendation for approval is, we agree with all the items that were contained in that report, and find no exception, and we appreciate that support. If that's it, I will move to number four. Number four is the Plan Unit Development Final Plan and Site Plan Review. It's a little bit more complicated. These are what I would call trailing applications, following the planning and zoning and the earlier plan. So this one becomes a little bit more detailed, and in this detail, we see items discussed such as access and parking and setbacks. One of the things I do want to point out is this public utilities. There's been a sewer line there for a long time. It's just that it's not in the existing easement. That was discovered, so we're going to have a new easement that basically makes sure that the pipe is in the correct easement. Now that the pipe's there, we can adjust the easement easily. It does not affect our site plan, and so it's simply a civil engineering filing at the courthouse. The screening, we all agree to 100% screening from the view, and then, of course, our landscaping. The Belfonis are famous for their landscaping, no matter what kind of project it is, and so we have continued that on this project also. Stormwater detention, then, of course, as it's mentioned in the report, will be picked up and detailed and engineered when we do the construction documents, but we have more than adequate space to provide for that. As we move through the staff recommendations, there's items A through E we agree with, and items 1 through 5, which are the stipulations, we agree with those two and find those acceptable, not only the MoDOT issues, but the roofing, stormwater runoff, and of course, the dedication of the new easement. And finally, we move to the fifth item, which is the Master Alternative Site Plan. We realize it took a lot more effort for staff to review this. This is unique, not only as a building and as a business use, but also as signage. The way the building sets up on Highway 7 and having view from the north would be more beneficial than having a sign on the east. Staff recognize that. We appreciate that. Also, this menu board, which, this being mostly a car-oriented site, such as a drive-through site, they, we appreciate their consideration for the signage we've provided them. So, in closing, they have one recommendation. We agree with that. We are in agreement with staff on all items this evening, and we appreciate the effort and work that they put into steering us and helping us through this very complicated application. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Do we have any questions for this applicant?
I guess I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Trozen?
Mr. Nolte. Just one question in regards to car washes in general. I know you handle a lot of water.
Yes.
Does that water just basically go down the storm?
Mark, Mr. Trozen, that's a great question. I, we do a lot of car washes and have learned a lot over the years from these facilities. The great thing about these Mirror Image Car Wash, the ones that Mr. Belfoni has, is we have massive recycling. We have a triple reclamation system that is used. Probably, in the normal processing of a car, you'll see anywhere from 80 to 90 gallons of water being used. Only about five gallons is released. This becomes even more effective when you consider that a lot of people wash cars in their yard, driveway. It flows out to the street with all sorts of dirt, chemicals in it, and it's not processed, and immediately goes to your nearest waterway. This one is highly processed, and we reuse the water again and again and again because it's easy to do. But it is an expense. You have to buy the quality equipment that not only processes it, but then also reclaims it and uses it again. But this is, most cities, you know, not most, but there are some cities in certain jurisdictions that, you know, won't, they're not real happy when the residents wash their own cars because they waste a lot more water and put a lot more contaminants into the streams, whereas this is a benefit. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nolte. I will take it out to the audience now and ask if there's any witnesses who'd like to speak in favor of this petition. Is there anyone who'd like to speak against the petition? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back up here for comments on the record. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and first, we will address the conditional use permit only, and I would entertain comments and/or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion.
Mr. Trozen?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of conditional use permit CUP-5-13-3951 for Mirror Image Car Wash.
Second. A motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Wallace.
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner McCall.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Bartolata.
Aye.
Commissioner Dewan.
Aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Aye.
Commissioner Trozen.
Aye.
Commissioner Abbott.
Aye.
Chairman Billups.
Aye. And that conditional use permit has been approved unanimously, and we will now move on to the Plan Unit Development Final Site and Final Plan and Site Plan Design Review. Comments and/or motions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wallace.
I have moved for approval the Plan Unit Development Final Plan and Site Plan Design Review, PUD S-5-13-3953 for Mirror Image Car Wash, with the five recommendations.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That PUD Final Plan, Site Plan Design Review has been approved, and we now move to the Master Alternative Sign Plan. Comments?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Banks.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Mirror Image Car Wash Master Alternative Site Plan, Case File ASP-5-13-3949, with the one staff recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that Master Sign Plan has been approved. And that brings us to a presentation from Mr. Holly on our 2014 to '19 Capital Improvement Program. Mr. Holly, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Time of year again for the capital improvement programs. I'd like to start off tonight by thanking Commissioners Trozen and Commissioners Banks for participating this year in the CIP and for joining the review committee. In past years, we've done a rating committee, but because of the nature of the capital improvements program this year, it was felt that a review committee would be more than adequate. So hopefully, that saved you a little bit of time, and hopefully, it was interesting to listen to the projects and get to see those. So thank you both very much. This year, the 2013, 2014 to 2018, 2019 CIP is being submitted in accordance with the requirements of our city charter. It specifies that the city administrator will prepare and submit capital improvements program, not less than five years, to the mayor and city council. They will be bringing this particular CIP to the city council, tentatively scheduled for next Monday on June 17. The Planning Commission, of course, looks for the, looks at the CIP with the focus on its consistency with our comprehensive plan, with our 2003 comprehensive plan. Again, the CIP this year is divided into funded and unfunded projects. The funded projects, of course, are those that funding has been identified for. The unfunded are those where we have not yet identified funding. But as we've seen in past years, as time moves forward, funding comes about in different ways, through grants and various other methods, and so sometimes projects are moved up. The strategic priority and strategic areas within the proposed CIP really haven't changed significantly from last year's. Maintenance, maintenance, maintenance. It remains a top priority for the city. We have limited funds and lots of facilities to take care of. This year, some of the priorities are the city hall roof. There are also two HVAC units on Vesper Hall, the dredging of Rotary, the lake at Rotary Park. There's some equipment replacement, street rehabilitation, sidewalk repair, and maintenance of sanitary sewer and water systems. Again, are all part of the overall six-year budget. One thing I did want to note is that we had some significant failures of the HVAC units at Vesper Hall, and those units either have or will be repaired, replaced, I'm sorry, shortly. I'm a little unclear as to how that funding transfers over to the CIP, but again, we assume that Christine Kates with the finance department will help us better shake that out when we go to the city council. Consistent with past CIPs, there is proposed to be $11.5 million in the street rehabilitation citywide. That's divided, that's divided between street rehabilitation, which is Project STO 6, as well as the sidewalk repair and maintenance program, which, two years ago, the city council took from the $2.5 million dedicated to street rehabilitation and took $200,000 of that and applied it to sidewalk repair. So this CIP is consistent with that. For this particular- those funds so that we can look at a grant, look at utilizing a grant opportunity for Woods Chapel Road improvements from northwest Briarwood Drive down to Walnut Street. As you all know, Woods Chapel Road is a priority project, and anytime we can get a grant to help us go beyond what the bond issue covered, we want to do that. This particular grant provides $3 million towards a $6 million project, approximately. The $2.5 million that was, was, has been dedicated to the street rehabilitation and the sidewalk repair and maintenance will be going completely towards that street improvement, so it'll cover the match for the Mark grant as well as excess and bring us up closer to the $6 million needed to complete Woods Chapel Road all the way to Walnut Street. I know most of you have been watching that project. It's pretty exciting. It's a good thing. For the 2013, 2014 CIP, there are six target areas. Let me just move this memo along. And of course, this is on page two. The six target areas include buildings and facilities, community development, parks, streets, sanitary sewer utility and water utility. The funding for all CIP projects in the 2013, 2014 fiscal year is $2.7 million. That compares to last year's budget for 2012, 2013 of $15 million. It sounds like a very large difference, but it, if you, if you look at last year's bond-related projects, the BF 18, which was the public safety building remodel and reconstruction project, was a $12.7 million project, so that added significantly to our overall budget. And then the Tri-County Feed Line last year in 2012, 2013 was a $1.2 million project, again, a significant project. So you can see where those dollars were higher last year. With those being taken out, now we're back to a pretty, more, a smaller budget. The unfunded projects have gone up this year. They are at $132.7 million. The funded, I'm sorry, the total for the funded and unfunded CIP this year is $163.7. The funded portion of the six-year CIP is approximately $24.7 million, and that represents 15% of the total estimated project cost of funded and unfunded projects associated with the budget. This compares to 29.6% of the total budget that could have been funded, or that could be funded last year. Total number of projects for the six-year CIP is 90, of which 16 are recommended to be funded and 74 are unfunded at this time. The good news is that the CIP for the upcoming fiscal year, 2013, 2014, is balanced, and it can be funded based on current, currently identified revenues. New projects that have come forward are all being placed on the unfunded list of projects this year on page three of the staff memorandum. Those projects are listed. I will be happy to put up a project sheet or answer any questions that you might have if you so desire. Otherwise, in the thought of time, we'll not go through each of those individually, but rather just let you look at the list that was included in the memorandum. The projects that were included in the CIP correspond with adopted documents and policies such as the comprehensive plan, the park strategic plan, Renew the Blue Visioning Plan, and the Direction Finder Citizen Survey. So that's part of what we look at when we look at the projects that we bring forward. The first year of the CIP that's adopted is part of a budget process. In September, it's understood that the city council will ultimately determine what the priorities and policies of the adopted annual CIP and operating budgets are. Again, the planning commission's role in this is really to look for consistency with the 2003 comprehensive plan, and in staff's opinion, the projects proposed conform to the goals of the comprehensive plan. With that, I'll really stand for any questions you might have.
Would anyone like to make a comment or ask question of Mr. Holly? I don't believe we do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. And that brings us to other business. Mr. Allen, do you have anything you'd like to add to tonight's events?
It's going to be home. Moved back to Blue Springs over the weekend, so we'll be back here officially, back to Blue Springs. Anyway, next planning commission meeting, we do not have any specific agenda items at the moment, but we will still plan on having our regularly scheduled comprehensive plan steering committee. So we're working on kind of framework for all the topics and the actual kind of structure of the plan. Got some draft guidance from our consultants today, and so we're going to start, staff will go through that for the next week or two here, and we'll get some information out ahead of the meeting for the 24th, so everybody kind of gets a handle on what the plan's going to look like, what's going to be in it, kind of what are we going to start kind of drooling down in topically. And I'll start setting the stage for these different geographic areas, but also topical areas, and then we'll, that'll be an opportunity then to start talking about bringing other stakeholders into the process throughout the rest of the summer. So kind of a big next step in the process with our next meeting. So even though we won't have a formal agenda for this meeting, we will have, I think, a little longer and more substantial steering committee meeting. Everyone's invited to attend.
Okay. But the, anyone who's not on the steering committee could consider-
Still welcome to-
Is welcome to attend, but-
Still welcome to participate.
But if you want to have a night off.
Yeah, not required, but invited to participate, absolutely. We understand that as we get into summer here, it's going to be kind of getting missed for folks, but everyone's welcome to participate. We kind of had kind of a big group of last meeting or two, and that worked well. Consultants seemed to think that was just fine. I know we kind of have a seven-person core group, but having the additional voices to kind of mingle into the discussion is, is very valuable. So don't think you, we want to exclude anybody, and, but also, in the alternative, you get a pass, you're not required to be there either.
Unless you're on the steering committee, and then you must.
Yes, yeah, so a little more important in that regard, but that's about it. That's all I have, I think, at the, at the moment. I'm sure you have some downtown events coming up, too.
Welcome back to town.
Thank you.
I do want to remind everybody that this Saturday, the Historical Society is having their annual garden tour. It's one of their main fundraisers for the year to help provide the maintenance for the museum, the hotel, and the New Depot, which is coming along. Those tickets are available up and down Main Street, and I believe at several merchants over on 40 Highway. That's all day on Saturday. Also, the Downtown Alive, the Downtown Revitalization Group, is having their annual quarks and canvas art fair and wine tasting, local wineries, on June 22nd, which is the following Saturday, and that goes from 2:00 to 8:00 in the afternoon, and everyone is invited to attend that as well. Anyone else would like to make any announcements or comments before we go?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one just technical comment. You may have seen, I was kind of doing email and texting and such. We had some technical issues at the beginning of the meeting, just for broadcasting sake. We are not streaming live on the internet. We'll be up there, but not sure when that will happen. That kind of program software suite, I guess, crashed. So it was running live on Channel 7, and will be rebroadcast. So it's just, and there were some sound issues to start. It sounds like just some kinks in getting things worked out, but, sorry, just kind of a FYI for more or less for folks watching this now, that there may have been some sound issues earlier on, and internet may be delayed. So that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.